Who was it that did it?
Like a light leechman.
Yeah, I had a surface melanoma.
Need to start.
And he opened it all the way up to that thing.
I do believe we have a forum here, just barely. Roll call, please.
Dong?
Here.
Millie?
Here.
Elliot? Absent. He is?
Here.
Whitlatch, Commissioner Whitlatch did inform us he would be absent today. Piliano?
Here.
Aguilar? Absent.
Okay, let's stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
A pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, let's, the record reflect that John Elliott made it, so we have exceeded our forum already. Okay, let's go to item two, public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any items not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the planning commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for planning commission consideration. As it all interests, the parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressed in the planning commission may be limited to discretion of the chair. Have anybody wish to make any public comments at this time? Seeing none, let's move on to the next item, the item three, approve of minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes for June 24, 2015.
I second that.
Roll call, please.
Dong?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
He is?
Yes.
Piliano?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to item four. This is the partial map public hearing. Action on all partial maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be approved for a separate public clearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there'll be a separate vote for each item. Is there anybody on the board that needs to cruise themselves? Anybody in the public wish to poo any items for discussion? Okay, so let's move on to four A. This is to approve a category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state Sequoia guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Section 15303 Class 3 pertaining to a new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approve tentative partial map number PPM 15016 and waiver of the final map. Can entertain a motion? Or, let me, I'm sorry, let me open to the public.
We have to open the public.
Let me make a public comment. Anybody wish to make any public comment?
Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the board.
Close public comment.
Thank you. Public comments being closed.
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the state of California SEQUA guidelines, Title 14 CAL Code Regulation Section 15303 Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM 15-016 and waiver of the final map.
I'll second that.
Move to second, roll call, please.
Dong?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
He is?
Yes.
Piliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, let the record reflect that Gil Aguilar is present. Mark here. Move on to item C, tentative partial map number PPM 15018, family bypass trust on their Newfield family and Hyatt to family trust, Jeff, just. This is a category exemption and tentative partial map and waiver of final map for division of 39.94 acres into two partial. The site is located on the south side of Avenue 410, approximately a quarter mile west of the intersection of Avenue 410 and Row 48 west of Dinuba. Okay, I'm gonna open a public comment. You don't need to cruise yourself on this thing.
No.
Okay, it's Jackie, because I know you're into everything. So the public comment portion is open. Okay, I'll bring you back to the boards and close the public comment. Any comment up here? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, state SEQUA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Section 15303 Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM 15-018 and waiver of the final map.
I'll second.
Move to second, roll call, please.
Dong?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
He is?
Yes.
Piliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, let the record reflect that Gil Aguilar is present. Mark here. Move on to item C, tentative partial map number PPM 15018, family bypass trust on their Newfield family and Hyatt to family trust, Jeff, just. This is a category exemption and tentative partial map and waiver of final map for division of 39.94 acres into two partial. The site is located on the south side of Avenue 410, approximately a quarter mile west of the intersection of Avenue 410 and Row 48 west of Dinuba. Okay, I'm gonna open a public comment. You don't need to cruise yourself on this thing.
No.
Okay, it's Jackie, because I know you're into everything. So the public comment portion is open. Okay, I'll bring you back to the boards and close the public comment. Any comment up here? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, state SEQUA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Section 15303 Class 3 pertaining to limited number of new small facilities and structures and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM 15-018 and waiver of the final map.
I second that motion.
Move to second, roll call, please.
Dong?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
He is?
Yes.
Piliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, that takes care of all the partial map. Let's move on to item five A, public hearing. This is a special use permit number PSP 15024, Verizon Wireless, Timothy Adams in care of SAC Wireless. It's a category exemption and special use permit to allow a 105-foot tall monopine-type wireless telecommunications facility with 12-panel antennas and support equipment on a 1,600-square feet leased portion of a 23-acre site in the AE20 agricultural zone. The site is located on the north side of the Avenue 264, approximately 1,000 feet east of East Highway 63, south of Visalia. Okay, it's all yours.
Chairman Gong, Commissioners Aaron Bach, Chief Planner, Teller County RMA, I'm standing in for Dana Metlin, who's absent today. As stated, the project before you is a categorical exemption and special use permit number PSP 15-024 for the installation of 105-foot-tall monopine-type telecommunications facility. What's been handed out to you was email exchange with the city of Visalia and an actual depiction of the monopine, as the staff report had an earlier version, so I wanted to make sure the versions of the site plan and the monopine were exact for your decision today. The categorical exemption we are requesting is under Paddle 14, Section 15303 for Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. This project is obviously compatible with the exemption because the monopine cell tower will be erected on a 1,600-square-foot portion of a 25-acre site and involves, does not involve the use of hazardous substances and does not exceed the 2,500-square-foot threshold in floor area. The entitlement itself can be found under Section 162B of ordinance number 352, which allows radio, microwave, and television towers in the AE20 zone with a special use permit. We did find the project consistent with the general plan, obviously with the right to farm notice. It's telecommunications, business technology, there's just suppression measures, emergency access, and as discussed, there are no hazardous materials on site. The project itself was noticed, according to the law, with 300-foot radius boundary included and in the newspaper, but also we went to the extra measure to make sure the city of Visalia was absolutely notified on the project. We did notify the city manager, and as you can see in the documents we presented today, that the Assistant Director, Josh McDonald, had no comments on this project. So the project itself sits immediately outside the city limits of Visalia. As stated, the project is located at 11, 1,10836 Avenue 264 on the north side of Avenue 264, approximately 1,000 feet east of State Highway 63, south of the city of Visalia. The project is located in the AE20 zone and contains agriculture currently. The surrounding properties are zoned AE20 and AE40, and as stated, it's immediately outside the city limits of Visalia. The proposed project is the 105-foot-tall wireless telecommunications facility with 12-panel antennas and support equipment. Subject site is also within the urban area boundary and hence the added consultation with the city of Visalia. As you can see, the project sits on the very corner, on the south of the project site. Again, the site plan from the staff report, we'll elaborate a little bit more with a graphic representation of what this looks like, but you can see the plan for the project. Here is the profile, the elevation we presented to you today, so you can see the actual monopine. And here is a photo simulation of what it would look like from that location. And you can see that it matches the existing surrounding, proportionally a little bit taller, but does match the type of plants in the area, type of trees in the area. So with that, we do request that the planning commission make a motion to approve the categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and conditionally approve the special use permit number PSP 15-024. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you. Anybody on the board wish to make, have any questions?
I had a question, Aaron. Was this one that came to us before and then now is coming back, or did they offer this from the start on this?
What happened actually was, this one went through PRC, and so this is the first time you're being presented with this actual project, but through the PRC process is how we got to the monopine.
Good, looks good.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public comment portion of this item. Anybody wish to make any public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment and entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion that we grant the special use permit to allow the 105-foot-tall monopine-type wireless with the 12 antennas on the 25-acre site in the AE20, and that's south of Visalia. And also that the categorical exemption is appropriate in this matter.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Dong?
Yes.
Dong?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
He is?
Yes.
Piliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to item B, 5B. This is a special use permit number PSP 15025, Robert Sigmund. It's a category exemption and special use permit number PSP 15-025 to allow a third residence for a family member on a portion of 14.01-acre partial in the AE40 agricultural zone. The site is located on a property located on the west side of Row 180, approximately 1,856 feet north of Avenue 224, west of Lindsay. And Andrew, you're a contact. Go ahead.
Good morning, Chairman, Planning Commissioner, fellow commissioners. My name's Andrew Pacheco, I'm Teller County RMA. This is a request for a third residence within the AE20 zone requested by Mr. Steigman for a family member. Okay, now, this project right here is consistent with the 2030 county, Teller County general plan. It's outside any urban area boundary, and the land designation is Valley Agricultural. The site is located, okay, the site is located on the west side of 140 on a 14.01-acre parcel, and it's for a third residence. Now, the following land uses are relevant to the proposed project. LU 2.4 residential agricultural uses. The county shall allow limits to extend, allow by law, residential development on lands designated for agricultural use, only when the residences are needed to support farming operations, agricultural tourism, and agricultural support for family members. Okay, also, the general plan identifies the land use number 2.3. Cluster development encourages development and shall allow the development of agricultural residential structures, and the requirement are either on a public right-of-way or via a private road. Okay, the project was notified in the Visalia Times Delta, 9 GLI, 2015, and people within 300 feet, property owners, were notified. As you can see with the site, the site is agricultural. A small cluster of this, which is pertaining to land use 3.2, which is in this small area, which is against the right-of-way on the west side of Road 180, this location, is where the development is going to be. It's not taking away any agricultural uses since the land there has already been utilized for residential development. The site is zoned AE40, and the surrounding properties are also zoned AE40, so this is not a different thing that's going on with the property itself. This is the site plan that identifies the property, as it's not horizontal, but as you can see, along the right-of-way frontage, Road 180, the proposed development is behind an existing mobile home. This would make the third residence on that site. It's also located on a 130-by-300 portion of the 14-acre property. Now, that area right there is only 12% of the parcel itself. 88% of the property will remain in agricultural, and there will be no loss of agricultural uses to the site. Okay, the site has not been designated in any restrictive zone that's endangering endangered species, although the shaded area to the north is identified as Kit Fox area. Now, mitigations have been implemented in the resolution to prevent any type of endangered species to be disturbed, and that would take care of that, but as this time, the site has not been designated to hold any endangered species. Okay, this is the existing driveway from Road 180. The driveway is consistent of decomposed granite. There's only one driveway, so there's not gonna be any proposed new driveways to the site, and the location where the proposed new dwelling will be behind the existing mobile home. Okay, as you see that red line right there, well, that's where the line is for the existing dwelling. The mobile home that's there existing is to the right. The house that's existing there is behind that to the left, where the green grass area is, that's not shown. And this will be the driveway that will be utilized. This is a proposed area where the proposed third dwelling is going to be proposed. There's no loss of agriculture since it's already vacant. Okay, that's also a photo shot from the west, looking east, behind the existing mobile home, and that's where the existing proposed dwelling is going to be proposed. Okay, planning commission actions, recommendation, approve the categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state SEQUA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Section 15303 Class 3 pertaining to limitations of new structures, small facilities and structures, and conditionally approve special use permit PSP 15-025. Or there are alternatives. One, move to approve subject to modifications through additions and deletions of conditions as discussed. Two, move to deny. Three, refer back to staff for further study and report. Four, close the public testimony portion and continue the public hearing to a date certain. And this would conclude staff's report.
You had a question, Ed?
Yeah, Andrew. Is there any hardship issues that are, that's driving this request?
The owner of the property is very elderly, and they cannot work it. The son is the one that's operating the ranch and the orchard that's there, so it's all family. The son will be occupying the proposed third residence. Okay, and that's where they plan on staying. The elderly people that are there, which are the parents to the applicant, are not planning to move anywhere. So it's beneficial for them to have their son live there so they can go ahead and operate the ranch, or the farm, excuse me.
Hit her question?
Yes.
I have a question, and this is quite interesting because this just came up this weekend. So, move forward, five years, 10 years. The land sells, for whatever reason, then they can rent out those other mobile homes as rentals?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Okay, if they do rent them out, they have to rent them out to family members or agricultural workers per the agricultural zone.
So it goes with?
The property. They cannot be sold off separately or divided off. Okay, and they must follow the criteria of the agricultural zone, which is the AE20, which must comply that family members or farm workers or employees of the property owner must occupy those dwellings. And there are conditions in the resolution that require that.
Any other questions up here? I'm gonna open a public comment portion of this item. Anybody wish to make any comments in the public? Seeing none, I'm gonna close it and entertain a motion.
Of course, you guys know this is one of my pet peeves here. This is an AE40 zone. It's all AE40 through there. We have rules in AE40 for a reason, and I'm of the opinion that you rezone it, or you just stick with the current. I just do these things all the time, and it's just, I don't think it's good planning. We're already starting to get a little community out there. There's a whole bunch of little AE40s that are less than two acres. How that happened, I don't know, but I don't think that adding more to that is good planning at this point in time.
That comment is well noted. I believe that the AE40, these parcels were already this size when the AE was overlaid over this. Is that correct, Andrew? That is correct. These parcels are already existing prior to the AE40. That area is not gonna be rezoned until the entire county gets rezoned because it is way out there, and they cannot do spot zoning. They're stuck with the AE40 until such time that it's developed into a city or something, and if we look at the vicinity map, it's not gonna change. It's way out, far away. So the AE40 zoning is there permanently until such time that another entity, such as a city, annexes the property or the urban area boundary extends out to that area. Again, this is consistent with the general plan as identified with the 2030 plan.
Comments?
Comments, guys? Unless we can put some limitations on this thing, that at some point in time when the elderly people no longer need to use that, the residence, that we reduce one of the residences on the property.
There is a condition in the resolution that would require that. When the condition is no longer applicable, said mobile home shall be removed.
All right, then I can support that.
I missed that totally, too. I didn't see that.
Motion, please.
I'll get that for you, ma'am.
I'd like the idea, too, that it's already on vacant ground, so I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve the special use permit PSP 15-025 to allow a third residence for a family member on a portion of that 14.01-acre parcel in the AE40. Again, the categorical exemption is the appropriate course in terms of the environmental assessment on this, so I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Move to second, the roll call, please.
Dong?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
He is?
Yes.
Piliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
I found that, thank you.
23. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's go on to item six, moving on right here, the director's report.
Thank you. I'd just like to inform your planning commission that yesterday, the board took action on two appeals, one for the Pappich Asphalt Plant in near Goshen. The board upheld and affirmed your decision and denied the appeal, so that project will move forward. The other was the May 13th, before your commission, was a billboard next to Lindsay that was denied. The applicant appealed that, and your decision was affirmed by the board of supervisors as well yesterday. So I just keep you updated on that. Give you another thing on our community plan updates and our rezoning. Last week, I received, well, we actually received an application from one of the engineers, Jim Winton, for a zone change in Tipton for Young's Trucking next to Ventura Coastal. And I looked at that, and I said, you know what? You don't need a zone change now because the planning commission and their foresight has rezoned this land, and so therefore, this project can move forward with the zoning that was applied through your update of the community plan. So we returned their check and said, now you can come in with your building permits for review and go forward on that. So the community updating is already showing benefits and rewards for economic development of becoming easier to get projects in and going forward, so I think the commission should be congratulated on that. Just to touch a little bit on the drought update, our bottled water program for supplying water to individuals and families, we're up to about 1,000 families now that are receiving this. We've got about three months left of monies from our first grant to continue this, and we've just recently, the board authorized applying for another $750,000, which would
the, we did have a community meeting in Ducor last week. They're very happy we're out there. We're tying their complete streets to their actual designs for their school project. So we'll be out in front of that one versus with Pixley where the school improvements got built before we were there with the complete streets. So they're very happy and so we're hoping within next month to be able to, or a little bit longer than a month, be able to bring those for you. And the housing elements also moving forward fairly quickly. So we're trying to make them time them so we can do those general plan amendments currently. It's going to be as bad as what we went through before with the, you know, five EIRs, but they're, they're definitely going to be complicated projects coming to you here, hopefully within the next, within the next two months.
Clint, would you like to say anything?
We never hear from you, Clint.
We never hear from you.
Anything on the Mineral King Bridge? Anything, any update on that?
Mike Bond, Public Works. Yes, I'll give the same answer that was given before, yes and no. The, the yes is that it's in progress. It's, it's, right now, it's at Caltrans. There are four alternatives that are being analyzed right now. Caltrans will come back probably in mid-August with, with an update, probably with a recommendation too. The county will have obviously a lot of latitude in that recommendation, so we'll, we're working with them, you know, concurrently here. So, and there's several good alternatives. I think we can prepare a package if you're interested as, you know, what's happening there so you can kind of go along with us. But the selection will probably be made late August, I believe, and, you know, we'll move forward with, with the design option. But looks like a very interesting bridge to maintain the character of it that it is now and, you know, provide the structural stability for the next fifty, hundred years.
Mr. Chair, one question. Mike, this is a little bit off the agenda today, but has to do with the drought. Any, any indication that Visalia doing some additional treatment to their, their, the water out there to a tertiary level?
For Visalia, City Visalia? I wouldn't be able to comment on that.
You wouldn't comment, yeah, okay. I'm just curious still because I know there's a lot of water and they just, in the past, they've just been running it out, you know, down across, across creek and, and into their, trying to farm with most of it. But if they could get that to a tertiary level, we could use it in, in different, in different manner than just letting it run down.
Also, I've got a comment too, also related to water. Two nights ago, we got a half an inch of rain in ten minutes. Now, I know San Diego got, I don't know, one point six, it was the, the record-setting day for a day in July since records were kept in eighteen fifty. So we do, are, we, right now, we're already experiencing the preliminary effects of the El Nino. The surface temperature in the areas opposite, in the Pacific Equatorial Region is three degrees warmer. That corresponds with some of the most intense El Nino, El Ninos we've ever had. Now, of course, the effects are going to be more dramatic probably in Southern California, but we are going to get cats and dogs this year and I hope we're prepared. Be nice if we could catch and retain some of it, but, and I know one year does not bust a drought, but right now, it's raining so hard and so often in the high country that all those upper areas of the ecosystems are being restored right now and they're, I know my wife and daughter are out there right now and they've got to be drenched. And it's been doing this now for several weeks. In June, there was five inches of rain and three days of Mineral King. So it's still a bit spotty, but I would say by October or so, it's going to be, you know, total coverage for the Southern and Central California region. So it's coming. The water that we've been waiting all these years for, it's coming because I tell you, the other night it rained so hard, I was really starting to think, is this going to stop? And, you know, it's nice, we hadn't seen rain like that. And I, as far as I can check in the records that are kept on our property, back to about nineteen thirty, we've never had a single day like that in July either in three of us, so it's coming.
I, I heard on the news yesterday or the day before, Bass Lake got two and a half inches.
Right. A little higher elevation than us and as you go up, of course, they got more. In Yosemite, they got even more than that, you know, in the five, six thousand foot range. So the water, it's still, like I said, it's still spotty, but there's going to be plenty of it.
You know, it's, it's, that's why it's so important to work on water storage units because from what I've been reading, they're predicting that the rainfall isn't necessarily going to change much as the time that it's going to come. And we're no longer going to get it winter and our Mediterranean climate might be changing a little bit, kind of like it is to Southern Arizona or Western Arizona.
Yeah.
And we're going to have more monsonal effects. And so although the, the rainfall, annual rainfall will be the same, it's going to be coming at a time where it won't be snow and it won't be stored up there in, in a solid form. And we need to have storage, otherwise we're going to lose it.
Well, you've seen the signs on the highway, right? Trains are damned.
Yeah, that's right. Trains are damned. Well, that's a whole nother story.
If I may just make, just a couple of comments. One is on our flood control program. As you can probably imagine, a lot of the attention and grant funding has been focused on the drought. And that's about a year, or year and a half ago, we would have been in very good position to get funding for several of our flood control projects, but the drought kind of was the thing de jour. The, the good news is that I think, you know, there's more attention now on, on the flooding side of it. We have three projects that are, that have been clearly identified to or ready to go, shovel ready, so to speak, ready to go to construction. And I spoke with the, our contact at the Upper Kings Basin Erwin. We have those three projects listed with them. They're the first in the, in the major organization that is very well organized that we would go through to secure grant funding. But we're looking beyond that to see if we can go directly to DWR in anticipation of a very wet season to see if we can get funding for these projects. The Flood Control Commission's been working on this for a long time. We're now staged to build some projects and the dilemma or the timing is, the grant funding isn't quite focused on, on the flood control projects, but we're hoping that that will change pretty quickly. The other comment is on the preparation, on the emergency response preparation. We typically go through the meetings in the fall with OES and a number of other agencies just to kind of get staged, sandbagging, et cetera. But I've requested that our management group one under the new organization of Public Works for Road Maintenance, prepare a written emergency response plan. We're going to call it El Nino, just to give it a little more emphasis and to be prepared now so that in anticipation of meeting with the other agencies, we're even better prepared than we typically are, so.
So that means you have some sites already identified for, for storage and flood control?
Yes, we have, the, the major project is right at the Juvenile Justice Center, so it's Cottonwood Creek. It's really a realignment of that creek and I want to thank Aaron for that because this, this was attempted some years ago to get a flood control project. It was a major project. With Aaron's help, we were able to meet with the Corps of Engineers early on and get a key, I guess a discretionary permission, if you will, to move forward with a realignment of that creek back to its original natural channel. So we realigned the Cottonwood Creek in the vicinity of the juvenile detention facility probably about four or five times till we came to an alignment that not only satisfied the hydraulic issues and satisfied the Corps' desire to see it back to a natural alignment, but we also avoided the tiger salamander habitat area, which was, which could have been a very expensive, you know, proposition to address that. So very creative work and thanks to Aaron on, we now have virtually every permit in hand from Fish and Wildlife to the Corps of Engineers, to flood control, everybody's on board. So when I say shovel ready, that was a lot of work that we put together. And the board, Aaron brought a programmatic EIR for all three flood control projects to the board, so it's now adopted, so we're ready to go. We also have a project in Seville, so it's a little smaller scale, but it would hopefully intercept some floodwaters coming through the Sontag Ditch into the Seville community. So that got hit pretty hard in two thousand and ten. So that's a project that we would like to build like right today if we could, you know, so we're pushing on that.
Mike, are there any sites that are along Cottonwood Creek? Because I know that a lot of water comes down there from time to time and that does flood some of the areas. Are there any naturally occurring capture places that are maybe being farmed that maybe we could talk with a farmer and make some arrangement that, because El Nino's going to be here in just a matter of months and, and these projects are years, you know, down the road to where we could temporarily capture some of that water flood, pay the guy for the, for the time as grounds out of production and flood that area and he's going to benefit because it's going to, going to recharge his aquifers right through the area there as well, but at least not let it, because once it gets past us, it's done, it's, it ends up down in Corcoran and that doesn't do us any good.
Yeah, Cottonwood Creek is one of the very few large creeks that's free flowing, so there really aren't any reservoirs or upstream areas. We wish there were. If you ask the farmers downstream, that's, that's their answer to the flooding for Cottonwood Creek, build something upstream and that's always the solution. Unfortunately, there aren't. But there are some other things that we're looking at too. There, there are some areas that contribute to Cottonwood Creek. If you, Sontag Ditch would be one example. The Etum Button Ditch is another example. We're trying to capture that water before it gets to Cottonwood Creek. So those are the other two flood control projects that we're working on to try to mitigate the peak flows at Cottonwood Creek, especially by the time they get down to the Juvenile Justice Center.
There's another interesting aside to this too. With the rains coming in the summer season, the National Park and the forests cannot burn and do their, you know, burns that they have on, because the, the vegetation's too moist. So we're getting really good air quality this summer up in the foothills and I'm sure that's helping the valley too. So we're going to have to really change a lot of our long-term approaches to our planning and, you know, how we're taking care of these resources, but the rains have really this year dramatically shifted to the summer months so far, so we'll see how that plays out for the winter, but it's really, has some incredible effects that we're realizing right now. So I can remember a few years ago, we were wondering if this was climate change and it really is changing. It may not be changing as much as maybe five million years ago, but it's, these changes are going to affect us right now. So it's a very interesting time and a challenge for all of us.
It's going to be some challenges for agriculture and Nancy knows this too. There's times in the summer that you don't want any rain on your grounds.
Right now.
And so there are going to have to be some adjustments in that area as well.
Well, and you were saying about, you know, like White River, that we have, we farm down there and it's such a nightmare. And what I was going to ask you is, is RMA in charge of cleaning any of the waterways at all?
Yes and no.
Yes and no.
The, I, I sit on a committee, it's a technical and executive committee for the Lower Tulie Improvement JPA. It's basically a success dam and so the Lower Tulie has a very well-crafted maintenance program, so, but it's, it really is astonishing how much, and Aaron can testify this, how much effort has to be done on the regulatory side with Fish and Wildlife agreements to do virtually anything. So we're handicapped in that regard where we can't go in and do the cleaning that we otherwise would like to do on a lot of these creeks, Cottonwood being one of them.
Always jams up.
It's always jammed up. So in some areas like the Tulie, we're, you know, we're, that's a very good program. On others, we're, you know, we're still, it's, it's very expensive to go through and do all the biological, all the cultural, everything to satisfy Fish and Wildlife to get an agreement to do in-stream channeling and a lot of it is on private property, as you say, so it would really be a cooperative effort with the private landowners. I might say we, we do have another project, a bridge project, the Deer Creek project at Road two twenty-four is, we, we'd like to move forward. We're, we had a little issue, we would have been in construction, but we want to rebid the project, try to get some strong bids here, but that's a project that hopefully will beat the rains or, you know, we'll be able to construct that project, but that'll give a lot of people relief access-wise across Deer Creek.
Okay, damn monsoon's not going to affect your conference, our conferences.
No, well, it'll get some snow up there, but just bring your tire chains or your four-wheel drive and you'll be fine. That's in October.
See if I can buy you something. I know Hector.
Right in the midst of it.
Yeah.
In October.
That's up in June Lake, by the way.
Okay, let's go on to item seven, future agenda items. And then I guess we'll just adjourn the meeting to August twelfth.